Ready?
Yes.
Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Special meeting compliance statement, Lynn.
Hi, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma. Certified that notice of the time, date, and place of this special meeting was given at least 48 hours prior to the meeting to the Woods County Clerk of Woods County. And I was nailed and delivered to all of those who have made requests and paid request fee for the notice of the special meeting. I also certify that at least 48 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, superintendent's report.
Okay, agenda item 3.1, our resignations, retirements, and reassignments. We have three resignations. Our first one, you can open that attachment, that's from Mr. Schlar. Want to really commend our principals, this was a late resignation, we were able to get his classes covered. So we wish Mr. Schlar the best. He's, next to our pair professionals that have resigned, and so you will see later on our board agenda, we will be taking action to replace one of these positions. Appreciate the work of Ms. Lovelace to get these positions.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
Item number four, items of current business. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the bids as recommended by Kyler Construction Group Incorporated, construction manager for the Ala High School HVAC project.
So if you look at the first attachment, we have our HVAC bids that we received, and want to thank Kyler Construction Group for being here tonight, and Triarc for being here tonight also to answer any questions that the board may have. So you can review those construction bids, these are the bids that we received from each company. If you will look at the second attachment, once you're, you've completed looking at the first one, you can see there that we have the base bid, construction guaranteed maximum price. I'm gonna try to make this a little bit bigger so that you can see that if you choose on the screen. Okay, so hopefully you can see that. So you can see that Kyler Construction has gone through for each one of the bid packages and selected the lowest bid amount. They have then gone through and they have their total subcontractors' cost, the general conditions, bond and insurance, asbestos allowance contingency, and the fee which comes up with a base bid of $1,025,428. Remind the board that we have $89,000 in ESER III funds that we have approved to spend on this project, and so that will help cover more than half of the cost, almost the entire cost. Take us about $216,000 to fund the rest of this new gym proposal, which is the base bid with the lobby out of our building fund. Before we move any further, I've kind of created a little bit of breakdown here for you to just kind of give you an idea, and I believe you can read that, and I will make that just a little bit bigger. I've put here the cost of our new gym from Kyler Construction on the guaranteed maximum price, and then I've also put here right below that our ESER III approved funds. The $216,000 is the amount out of our building fund. And so I'll stop right there, and you can go down and look at our collections. You can see that on a yearly basis, our add-on collections only, not total collections, but just our add-on in our building fund, we have about $564,000 that we can project for this year. Notice from 1819 through to 2223, what I'm projecting, we've seen a decrease, but my projection is extremely conservative compared to what we have received over the last four to five years. I've also kind of done a breakdown of our expenses from 1819. We spent $167,000 out of our building fund for improvements. In 1920, $60,000. 2021, that was our art room renovation that we spent, also with other improvements, utilities that we paid for out of our building fund. You can see that number dropped again, and what we would project to spend again with these proposed improvements. Any questions about that? And just a reminder, but that's not our total revenue, that's only add-on collection. So back to this agenda item, are there any questions with agenda item 4.1 and the base bid, and what that entails, what that would look like, that might be directed to Mr. Pop or Mr. Kyler?
With supply and demand, what kind of challenges do you think we may run into? I know that's a challenge.
The biggest, the biggest challenge with this is actually ordering and receiving the HVAC units themselves, which is why when we bid this, we bid this, we're bidding this now so we can start procurement, so we can have the units when basketball season is over, so we have everything in hand, so when we start.
And that's still the game plan, is not do anything till we actually have everything?
Correct, because you're looking at probably a minimum of 36 weeks to receive these HVAC units. Outside of that, I don't, that's the biggest lead time issue.
And you would know, I just, because of what you do in your business, but okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, 36 weeks is lead time on that.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen any improvement over the last year?
No.
Not on HVAC equipment.
Not really on anything for my end, yeah. It's wood doors, I'm trying to finish a job out west, and the wood doors I ordered in April, and I just got notification, they got put on a truck for five unfinished wood doors. Which is only reason why we tried to do this the way we did it. Bid it where we can order material, we're gonna have a long lead time, where we're not mobilized, we don't, we're not incurring that cost, but equipment's being ordered. So we're trying to make up for that.
Are you seeing, are you projecting any improvement to any of that in the future in the next four to five months?
I, I would love to tell you yes, but what I think is you're gonna see the industry adapt and start doing what we're doing now, where we're bidding early, you're gonna have a longer lead time procurement phase of a project before you actually mobilize the manpower and really start general conditions, start the cost. So I, I think you'll just see a shift in planning, so where there'll be a, there'll be a longer period before the job actually starts, that the job started because all this stuff is being ordered. I think you're gonna see that, and then the industry can always shift back to a more just-in-time approach, more traditional, but for right now, especially with HVAC units and some of that stuff, it's a long lead time, so just bid it, bid it earlier and plan on that lead time.
Are these units being built overseas?
Yeah, no, I don't know that, because it depends on what manufacturer. I'm sure that there are parts of it that are, but really, it's more back up at the factories themselves, and those are probably stateside. Their shortage in trucking, freighting, the stuff is a real issue, but that's the shortest answer I have.
The bottom line is, we just don't know, do we?
You just don't, yeah. You just don't know. But that's been pretty standard, I asked several, and with the other jobs we have going, that 33 to 36 weeks is, has been a pretty standard answer from multiple different subcontractors.
And when do we pay for those units? Is it when they get on site?
When they get, when they get here.
If there's a reduction in cost of those, do we see the benefit of that?
You'll sign, that will do the submittal, and that price is locked in, and it's ordered, and that's when it's locked in. If it gets cheaper down the road, you've already locked in at this price, I don't, I don't perceive that happening, haven't seen that yet anyway.
But on the flip side, they have to honor their price as well, because, uh?
Yes, that's, yeah.
What is the asbestos allowance, what would that consist of?
In the old gym, the piping, the old hydraulic boiler piping is all to be removed, and some of that has the bad type of asbestos in it, so that has, that will have to be abated and removed.
So that allowance covers the?
Yes.
People that would come in?
Yes.
Specialized?
Yes.
Tony Explorer, and Ross should make be able to tell us, but as far as the, is it a sock that will be in the gym, is it?
So in the 99 gym, yes, it's a, it's a fabric duck. There's an internal skeleton that keeps everything caught and tight, but I can use your photos of ones we've installed for the projects, but I mean, it's a, we've done at least seven or eight of them at this point.
Lifespan for those is what?
Lifespan?
Lifespan for the, for that sock or?
Oh, it comes with the same warranty as the metal.
Okay.
Yeah, the, if, if you've been following the product for very long, the older, the older version didn't have a skeleton on the inside, and when it inflated, or when the pressure kicked on, it would have like a rippling sort of effect, and that would cut down on the lifespan, just the way the fabric would get shifted as it inflated, but with the skeleton in there, it keeps it, it keeps it very standard.
Stunting ears loud either, is it?
I mean, the system itself, once it's on, is about the same, but when it kicks on the, yeah, you don't get that anymore. No, our, our old building that we used to work in had the old fabric duct in it, so I'm very familiar with it.
Loud, isn't it?
Let's review a couple things, just to help us just a little bit about the financial side of it a little bit here. I think I understand it pretty well, but I do want to ask a couple more questions. After the, say we decided to do the project, or we do both of these projects right here, after those things are paid for, we have, still have a projected carryover of $2 million.
Correct, and that's at the bottom of this original plan, so.
It also is, doesn't, does the $2 million carryover include what would be this year's income?
Yes, our projected income, correct. Off of add-on only, not all of our other minor sources, but just off our add-on tax, correct, it is.
So our, let's look at 2223, we have $506,400 worth of income coming in just this year, correct? Which would, that income alone right there would more than, and pay for the, the difference between the ESER money that we're getting as well as that, plus the $100,000. The one-year's income would pay for this project, correct?
Correct.
And not touch any of our?
No.
Okay. Do we have another project in line for this year?
We talked about our continued work on the paving projects, that would also be a building fund solution. We've also talked about our cafeteria renovations, that's a child nutrition. We are locked into cafeteria renovations, we, we need to spend our child nutrition fund money, we're required to, that's federal money that must be spent this year. And so we'll move forward with that project. The paving projects, we're continuing to get budgets and seek those from, from Kyler. Triarc's working on some adjustments to our original plan. I will tell you also that Mrs. Tucker did a great job last year of leading our strategic plan in the resource area, and we had a couple of meetings with some stakeholders. From that, we submitted a survey to those stakeholders, they too were buildings, they submitted some, some ideas that they had, and we had 22 responses, I believe there was probably between 20 to 30 stakeholders that participated. And so we're going to look at those priorities, review those, see if we need to survey again, see if priorities have changed, and that may dictate what our next project, the priorities of our next projects as we move forward.
And you don't foresee anything on that list, or anything that's on our things-to-do list? I have a lot of those lists. That would, super see, that would be more important than what we're doing here, or would be a priority, or in the event those were emergencies, we could still do them?
We would still be able, with our carryover, we can handle any of those other projects. And I'll tell you that one of the things that these projects are going to allow us to do is create a space, another option for our students for graduation, which we believe will hopefully eliminate the problem of tickets and limited seating. We also believe that, you know, when we have freshman orientation, we have student council activities, when we have lock-ins in the old gym, we have summer league basketball, we have banquets. It can become more of a multipurpose facility used throughout, and so I believe that it's much needed, and it's something that will, will not hurt us in the long run as we move forward in our other projects.
Do our teams practice at the same time every day?
Yes, they do.
So those gyms are utilized every day?
Correct, yes.
And this way we don't have to broke, I mean, some of them in early, we used to have one gym take turns. Those were exciting years, but, so it is, it is, we do get a lot of use out of the old gym.
I believe, you know, Dr. Nicemar and I talked about this just today, and, you know, there, there are more activities that happen in there on a day-to-day basis than maybe you realize. We have some students that go and work on some therapy and some rehabilitation there that I had forgotten about. You know, we have, like I said, we have all kinds of activities that occur in those gyms, and you just don't think about it when you're in the day-to-day mix of it.
Appreciate that, I, I know pride's not the right word, but we take a lot of, a lot of pride in the fact that our district has zero indebtedness. And doing so, we've been able to prioritize things and save money, and just make sure that we are, are in our list of things to do, but this is at the top, you know, above other things that might absolutely have to be done in, in building security and issues. I know we're, it seems like we're replacing heating air units once a month around here, and are we, I mean, I think I know the question, answer to those questions, but I want us to just stop and reflect that we do have plenty, we have good enough savings account, we're gonna be okay, and in any event, we do need a bond issue one of these days, we're ready to put forth some big projects with that. And we need, I know our buses, we, we just, we bought, we've just been, I know you and I visited about a lot of things, and I think today's a good time to visit a little bit with that openly.
Sure, and I think we have some opportunities, mentioned earlier, Mrs. Tucker, and the great job she did with that, with that survey. Things have moved fast in, in a year, and things have changed, and so we've taken some steps already with some piloting of some different ways for some security with doors, but we know we've got to look at, we've got to look at some of those things, we know that we've got some needs in transportation activity buses, there are some definite needs there. We are going to have to prioritize those things, and we're gonna have to manage our money well, which I believe we will, but these projects wouldn't preclude us being able to prioritize those and make those happen in the future.
Do you have thoughts or questions?
The, I know the Building and Facilities Committee met a couple of years ago, I think I said on that, is, and, and we did talk about the new gym and the need for air conditioning in the new gym. Is the old gym on that list? And where does it rank on the list?
Yeah, I don't believe that old gym was on that list. I believe it was probably looked at as one of the same, but I, but I couldn't tell you that, to be honest with you, I don't believe it was separated on that list. And Tiffany also might add, we have, you know, when we started that initial committee, there was some, the prioritization of those changed once we went through COVID, and I think, you know, we continue to see some of those change, and so, you know, it's important we go back and seek some of those answers from our stakeholders, and our teachers, and our community members.
And I think that's my point, the, the extra $400,000 for the old gym, is this the best use of that money? Do we have other projects that are in greater need of attention? And I can't answer that, but you and the other administrators are the ones to answer that.
Where on that, on our list is the, at one time we talked about air conditioning in the lobby of the auditorium. You know, in any event, we have an auditorium, it's pretty rough when we come out into the lobby area between the auditorium and the bathrooms, that's not air conditioning. And we might want to look down the road, get a bid on that as well, since air conditioners are so easy to get.
If you, if I could just, I'm gonna change this, because I don't want to. There, that might be better to look at. So this is the survey that we used to send out. This encompassed many of those things, Tiffany, that in our initial facilities meeting, but then also took in some ideas from our stakeholders this past year. And you can see renovate lobby to the auditorium was a part of that discussion, and so, you know, as we, as we look through that, I think there's some foresight with those folks on the committee that are seeing some of those things. They even went through and broke it down by site. And so, you know, we're aware of those needs and know that there's going to be some different priorities that each group has.
For me, this, this was kind of a logical thing, and I know logic doesn't play into my budgeting at home sometimes, but the fact that it's all, they're all there doing that facility, is this the best time to finish the entire complex? You know, does one depend on the other? I mean, if we're gonna do the new gym, the best time to do that whole area would be all in one, get it, get the whole complex up to date and running, so we could have summer events, so we could utilize both facilities. So, you know, if, when we practice in the spring and in the fall, both gyms are air-conditioned, which I don't, I haven't played in a gym in years it wasn't air, I haven't played, I have sat in a gym in years it wasn't air-conditioned. So is that, is that any logic to the fact that we would do it while the getting's good? While, while we're doing one, is it good to do the other one?
And what do you all, could you all speak to that at all? Because I know we've talked about this, or nobody really talked to me about it, I overheard or listened with some of the contractors just about when they were bidding the base bid and talking about moving to this alternate, which would be the old one. Can you speak to that?
The, if you were to separate those two projects, the lobby, the new gym, they'd separate, say we're not gonna do it right now, we'll do it later, that cost would go up. You could probably add 30% on top of that $400,000. So the best bang for your buck is for sure to approve it as, as the alternate and move forward with it. Well, I will also tell you that we're, we're working on the cafeteria, working on budgets there. Our general conditions for this HVAC also encompass if we do that during the summer.
As long as it happens at the same time?
As long as it happens at the same time. We'll be wrapping this one at the summer, so there'll be a little bit of charge, probably an extra dumpster, some porta-johns, and stuff like that, but the general conditions will be almost nothing. So that, to help, so to answer your question, yeah.
That is answered.
Because you have, you're gonna have the same supervisor and the same project manager, whether you're doing this one job or three jobs, as long as they're in close proximity to each other.
Pretty close to campus.
So tell me why the increase, though? I mean, tell me why that 30% increase on the.
Well, if you separate them out, you're gonna have mobilization for every contractor twice. You're, you're gonna be splitting all that work, it's gonna be two completely separate jobs.
So not only have to come out to the site and do the 1999 gym in the lobby, but then they leave, and they're, take all their stuff with them, and then they gotta remobilize to come back out and do the, the alternate later?
And then all your supervision, all the administrative stuff that goes with it. It just, it becomes its own separate job.
It's kind of like startup costs.
Sure, absolutely.
Exactly, which is a lot more overhead to come out second time.
Makes sense.
Another question about how our budget and building fund, what is our estimated cost of this snake project?
We don't have an estimated cost.
Do we have a ballpark?
Which one?
The paving out here in the north parking lot, any ballpark?
I don't have a ballpark on that right now, because after we came out and we looked at it, we, we wanted to make some, some pretty big changes to what we had originally looked at, so we hadn't put a number on that yet.
Do you, do you know what the old number was?
No, we had, we hadn't put a number on it.
Scott, I don't remember what it was, Scott put together a number back in, what, 2018, 2019, somewhere in there, but I'm not sure, prices have changed so much since then.
Yeah, asphalt has went.
Crazy.
Crazy.
Yeah.
And that's not in your estimate?
No, no, completion of that project is not part of the 2223. It's not, it's not part of this estimate.
So we move forward with this project, and that one comes in over, we'll just pair that one back?
Right.
Is that our thinking?
Well, I think we have to review it and see, pair it back, or can we do it? And it could be, we may, we may have to rest a year, and we may have to collect, and then get back started the following year. And, and part of that, you know, when you're using your own funds, and, and you're making these capital improvements, we may have to be a little more patient as we work our way through these projects, but the key is we just keep moving forward with our projects.
I agree with that, I, I just think we need to prioritize what we want, like, and I don't know that, you and the other administrators know that, so if you're recommending that for me, then I support you, but I, I don't know a list of our priorities. I can't say this, old gym is a priority over the paving, I don't know.
Right, and I don't think, you know, as long as this project has been talked about, I don't know that anybody, I mean, could tell you, Tiffany, with clarity that they were separated, or where it would prioritize now with that list, but I think we need it. And so probably what needs to happen, you know, just from a perspective of prioritizing is we need to go through and bring you a plan or a list of what we are able to gather from this survey, and that will help you get a visual of where we're headed.
Or maybe just even go back and regroup. I think the survey's been done long enough ago, we might need to just kind of take that information, regroup again with the committees, and start thinking a little bit again. So I know lots changed.
Probably even with COVID, I mean, the space in the old gym, had you needed to need to have that space between bodies, you know, there was a time when we had a space, like, if it had been air-conditioned, that would have been a possible classroom, I mean, you could have put people down there and had, because that was one of the biggest challenges we've had in, in school, spacing everybody out and spreading out, and it was, you know, we would have, that would, that would have felt thin, now let's hope we never go through that pandemic kind of a situation again, but that was something that forty years of being in education, we'd never faced, and we kind of went, we gotta, you know, six feet apart, we had rope everywhere, making sure nobody was within a certain area, just to do everything we could to be safe, and that's, if the air conditioning was better conditioned for comfortability, for environment, we could have put kids in there, I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't know how often the gym is used.
for comfortability, for environment, we could have put kids in there. I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't know how often the gym is used. It sounds like it's used a lot. And it could be used more. And it could be used more.
And that's one of the things Dr. Nysmar and I talked about. I mean, part of what inhibits you from using the old gym is that it's not comfortable. And you don't, you know, you don't wanna use it. And so if it wasn't an environment or a space that could be used more, would?
Well, you said something about using the old gym, for instance, for a banquet. That would mean tarps on the floor, I'm assuming, to protect the gym floor if the gym floor is used for basketball. It was just, eh, we used to let people walk out there, it's regular shit. I mean, you know, I'm old enough, we had to bring two sets of shoes to school, and you didn't step on the gym floor without your other shoes. Free shoes were not allowed, so. But that would be an enhancement to the community, possibly, if they knew that that was a possibility, that they could grant it. It was air-conditioned and had tarp on the floor. And I mean, I don't know, I'm just looking at all the positive possibilities.
What would be a, an approximate operating cost for, the increased operating cost for the air conditioning, air conditioning being run? Do you have a number based off the square footage of?
I don't, I can, I can ask my engineers and see if they know.
I'd be curious to know.
How much more?
How much more?
How much electricity you're gonna be using, what that's gonna, I mean. Air conditioning can get pretty expensive on a monthly basis. So I'll ask them, see what they want.
Appreciate that.
My one building was like seven hundred dollars this last month, that, my home. I mean, if you can imagine what would be the five or six of them in there. So that's a good question, Shane. You know it's gonna be pricey at, at today's prices.
We've seen it increase. Seen a lot of places that just leave it running all the time instead of turning it off and turning it back on. It's cheaper to keep it running than it is to turn off and then re, re-cool.
Well, are we going to entertain? Four point one, that's where we are, correct?
Yes.
Four point one, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the bids as recommended by Kyler Construction Group Incorporated. Construction manager for the Ala High School HVAC product, project. Okay. Are we, are we approving this one point four million right here?
No, you're approving the base bid, the one million twenty-five, fourteen-eight.
First one, let's prove, okay, first one is the new gym then. Okay, your motion?
So moved. Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number four point two, discussion with possible board action vote to approve alternate one for the west gym, or the old gym, HVAC project at Ala High School. So to add that to the project would be an additional four hundred and one, four hundred thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. So moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
You know, you did a good job of explaining all that to us.
Thank you all. We appreciate it very much. You all, if y'all would like to stay, you can.
We're about, we don't have much left.
You're welcome.
Get out, won't you? Thank you. Four point three, is Justin with possible board action vote to approve an offer appointment to applicant number one, non-certified physician for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
We offer a employment to Michaela Cox as a paraprofessional. Michaela will be assigned at this point in time to Washington, and this replaces one of our previous resignations. So I'd recommend approval of this offer of the board.
Okay, a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve four point three.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number four point four, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following teachers as adjunct instructors. Instructions, instructors for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay, so we can approve both of these agenda items, four point four one and four point four two. Adjunct instructors are allowed to teach outside of their particular certification area. The State Department, we covered this a few months ago, State Department has waived that three-hour rule for adjunct instructors. And so Mr. Broth is teaching a guitar class for our credit this year. And so we asked the board to approve that hour of adjunct instruction. And then also Ms. Tyree will be teaching a pre-algebra course. And that pre-algebra course will help provide a foundation for some of our students that aren't quite ready for algebra. Her background in our aeronautics and physical science, we believe qualifies her to be able to help these students, as I said, get a foundation for math. And so I would recommend that we approve Mr. Broth and Ms. Tyree as adjunct instructors for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
So these classes are already being offered?
Yes.
So we have students in them already?
Yes, we have students in those, yes. And what happens with those when you, when you set your schedule? We, we missed on Mr. Broth, but through the enrollment process, we identified some students that needed some more help. And so we were able to create an extra hour for those students. And that's what brings this back a month. It's getting after it.
Item number five, signing of documents approved by earlier action. I'm gonna hear a mercy to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, fifty.
Second.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.